So we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome everyone to the special session meeting of the Monroe County Council. I'm Eric Spoonmore. I'll be chairing the meeting tonight and we are called to order. So we have just a single item on the agenda tonight, and that's regarding the Local Income Tax Council and a discussion on the allocation of public safety local income tax funding to our rural fire departments in the county. And related to that is a resolution that's being introduced this evening by Councilmember McKim, Councilmember Munson and myself. And as you all know, these members form the Public Safety Local Income Tax Subcommittee of the County Council, and this is the subcommittee that was responsible for formulating the funding recommendations to the qualified service providers in the county. And we heard these recommendations back in July, which we all unanimously approved at that time. And this resolution tonight will provide us one more final opportunity to voice our support for the funding recommendations to the rural fire departments. And just so everyone's clear, we do intend to have a vote on the resolution that's being introduced here tonight. So at this time, as we do with these meetings on Zoom, I'll do a roll call of councilmembers present for the meeting this evening. Councilmembers, please make sure your microphones are not on mute as I call the roll and indicate by voice that you're present. As I mentioned before, I know that Councilmember Deckard could be joining us a bit later this evening, and we'll want to make sure that we can include him for our business tonight. So I'll go ahead and call the roll now. Councilmember Deckard? He is not present. Councilmember Hawk?
Present.
Councilmember Iverson?
Present.
Councilmember McKim?
Here.
Councilmember Munson?
Here.
Councilmember Wiltz?
Here.
Okay, so we do have a quorum present, and we can now proceed to item two on our agenda. And I think at this time, I know County Attorney Rice is on the line with us, and I think it may be most prudent for our legal counsel just kind of give an update on the current status things, how we've got to where we are right now. And Margie, I'll let you kind of take over.
Okay, I'm happy to give a little bit of background, and in here I'll mix a little bit of the statute with it. So as you all know, there are certain units of government who get public safety local income tax. The county is one of those. So is the city of Bloomington, town of Ellisville, and the town of Steinsville. And the amounts that the shares that you get are based on population. Rural fire departments are not entitled on their own to get a share of public safety local income tax dollars. In the Indiana law, though, that allows for a unit, you know, a local income tax council, which is the council made up of the city, county, Ellisville, Steinsville, to provide a share of their dollars to those rural fire departments that do not get PS Lit dollars on their own. The way we've handled that in the last two years is the Lit Council has put together a public safety Lit Subcommittee that is comprised of members of all of the units. And that public safety Subcommittee has asked the County Council the last two years, given the fact that these rural fire departments are in your districts, they've asked the County Council to take a shot at looking at the applications that are submitted for funding and to make recommendations. And those recommendations would go to the public safety Subcommittee. So this year, the County Council's Subcommittee, which was Jeff, Eric, and Cheryl, did review the applications and recommended funding for some of those fire departments. That was voted on by the entire County Council on July 28th, and the County Council recommended that some funding be provided to those rural fire departments. When it went to the public safety Subcommittee, however, the public safety Subcommittee of the Local Income Tax Council voted to not provide that funding this year. So the way the statute works is that if funding is going to be provided to those rural fire departments, there has to be a vote before September 1st of any given year. And so understanding that the council had voted unanimously on the 28th of July to provide funding, I went ahead and drafted a resolution, it's the one that you have for you tonight, to go ahead and provide that funding to those fire departments. You'll notice that the resolution only has signature lines for the County Council. I did talk with the attorney for the city of Bloomington Common Council and the Ellisville Town Council, let them know that I was drafting this resolution, shared a copy with them, and also let them know that we were going to be holding a meeting tonight, and that required advertising of the meeting 10 days before the meeting. And I invited, I said I was going to prepare the notice so that their council members could attend tonight's meeting if they wished to. Obviously, you guys can't find any other entity to meet, but we certainly invited them to tonight's meeting. So it's my understanding that the other units of government are inclined to abide by the public safety Subcommittee's recommendation, which is to not provide funding, which is why they are not at the meeting tonight. They were not interested in passing a resolution to provide funding for the rural fire departments. However, that's the, that the, that the County Council wanted to. Now, it may be that I see there is a representative of Steinsville here, so you might want to hear from Steinsville. And certainly, if there are any other representatives from the units that happen to show up, you might want to hear from them. But the way that this resolution is drafted, and it is after my communication with the attorneys for Ellisville and the city of Bloomington, this resolution just has your signature lines. That you read the resolution fully into the record, so I'm not going to go into those details of what the resolution says right now. But if you wish to provide funding, then you would vote, you know, to support this resolution tonight. And obviously, if it's just the County Council that supports it, and you don't have any representatives from the city of Bloomington or the town of Ellisville supporting this resolution, it will fail. There will not be enough votes to support it. But I'm happy to answer any questions about the resolution, about how we got here, about the notice that was provided. But essentially, that's in a nutshell. And I will also say that I did get a reach out today from a representative of the media, and I kind of gave this background as well. So again, happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Okay, Mr. McKim?
This is actually not so much of a question, but a comment. I just wanted to make a quick correction that there was, that the distribution of the public safety income tax is actually based on property tax footprint, not population. And that's actually, that's actually material to, I think, some of our arguments on that. So that's the only reason I'm correcting. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so I see we've got a couple of folks who've been added as panelists. One of our elected town council members and the town of Ellisville, Mr. Ellis is present. And then also the town of Steinsville, I believe Ms. Purcell is one of the board members in Steinsville. So is this, are we, are they joining the, I guess this is my question to them, are they joining as members, voting members tonight? We may need to unmute. We can start with Mr. Ellis.
Not as voting members, because at least for me, I don't have a quorum here. So I was told attorney that I really wouldn't be able to do anything unless we have at least two other County Council members or Town Council members show up. I texted them and talked to them today, attempted to, and not gotten any response. So I don't know if anybody's coming in late or not.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Ellis, for joining us. And I believe that the same would probably be the case for Ms. Purcell.
Yes, I'm here to support the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
So now, and I know we're gonna, we're gonna have some discussion about this. Are there any questions or further comments at this point from County Council members who will be voting on the resolution tonight? I saw Ms. Hawk and then Ms. Munson.
Yes, I'm not sure what order you would like comments. I thought I would wait until after the resolution was introduced.
Yeah, yeah. And this was just based on the information that Ms. Rice had provided. So we'll have another opportunity for, for any questions and comments at that point, but totally fine to reserve those until later if you'd like. And I do believe that Councilmember Munson has some information that she would like to share. Are you wanting to do that now, or would you like to hold off until later to do that?
It really doesn't make any difference. I can do this now or later. And let me, let me do it now and bring up the file that I wish to share on the screen, okay?
Sure, thank you.
Okay. My screen is ready. Does it, does it work for you? Can you see it?
I am not seeing it.
Okay. Well, it's on my screen, and please tell me, I can't see you all when it's on my screen. So please tell me when you are able to see it.
Then you've selected the share screen function.
I thought I did. Is it working?
I am, no, I'm not seeing it. I may be able to.
Have I been given permission to share a screen?
Yeah.
President Spoonmore, if I may. It does seem like our Benton Township folks have a commitment in 15 minutes. And while we get the technology figured out, may we allow them to speak?
That would be great. Let's do that, please.
Thank you. That's what I was trying to enter there.
Great minds.
Hey, this is Charlie Powers with Benton Township, Chief Benton Township Fire Department. Sorry about that. All right. First off, I want to thank you all for asking us to present for this and be part of it, and the support that you guys have already shown us and obviously are continuing to show us. The main thing we put in that you guys agreed that you would like in the initial round of the approval for was for the plym event system, which is a vehicle exhaust extraction system that goes in the bays. And I sent earlier today the PowerPoint. I don't know if it was given, or I can try to share my screen to where everybody can see it.
That'd be great.
Okay. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
It is very short, but I wanted to very quickly kind of highlight some of the reasons why we feel this is a necessary purchase for us going forward. So the project scope would be to install, purchase and install a plym event vehicle extraction system for the three bays in the back, which is the building picture you see on the right, as well as four bays in our front building. That may be a little confusion, confusing since you see five bays, but we are also getting bids currently to remodel the fire station, which would in turn eliminate the trucks on the far left side and put a bay where the two mandors are in that window to the right of the pickup truck. And those would be the four bays from there to the west or to the right would be the four bays in the front building that we would add that system. Currently, we have trucks in four of those bays now and a boat in one of them. The cost of that system, for both systems with installation, is $80,000. Like I said, that is to purchase the system and do the factory installation in our fire stations. Benefits firefighter and public safety, the diesel exhaust is a known carcinogen. The gases and particulates from the vehicle exhaust, they can penetrate the human respiratory system and exacerbate breathing problems. And it also can lead, the exhaust can lead to cardiovascular and other diseases. Secondary is just the cleanliness of the fire station. When you start the trucks and they're inside, obviously you have exhaust that then gets stuck to the walls, stuck to the cabinets and everything else, and just makes the atmosphere much dirtier. NFPA 1500 sets the standards for occupational health and safety and wellness for fire protection. And NFPA 1500 asks that all departments contain all vehicle exhaust emissions to a level of no less than 100% capture, captive rate. And that's really all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, sir. Are there any, any questions for Benton Township representatives? Ms. Hawk, yeah?
Yes, I heard you say a boat in one of the bays, and I'm assuming that's for rescue perhaps at Lake Lemon or Lake Monroe.
Yes, yes, we've been called to Lake Monroe, but predominantly Lake Lemon. We're gonna have it out on the lake, for instance, on Labor Day for six hours in the middle of the day just to help with, you know, any emergencies.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Powers, for joining us tonight. Appreciate the presentation and the, and the very helpful information. And I know we have some other fire departments that would, that are here present, and we'll check and see who else would like to provide some remarks.
All right, thank you very much.
I believe Mr. Dillard is here with us.
Good evening. I submitted a video to Kim. I'm not sure if she plans on just showing that or not, but if she's gonna show the video, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
I forwarded that on to TSD. TSD, were you able to get that?
If we can play that and share it.
Yes, sorry, I was looking at something real quick. Which was the item you wanted me to share?
It was the video from Dustin Dillard. He had it in a link.
The MFPD presentation?
Yes.
Yes. All right, one moment. Sorry, one second. I need to make sure I get audio with it. I apologize.
The Monroe Fire Protection District has applied for public safety local income tax funds to increase public safety in our jurisdiction. Approximately 45,000 citizens rely on our organization to provide fire, rescue, and emergency medical response. Those citizens reside in over 19,000 housing units across 317 square miles of Monroe County. That's 77% of Monroe County's area. Without the Income Tax Council's allocation, our citizens whom have already paid this tax on their income will receive none of their hard-earned dollars back to their fire department. Here are the projects we have requested. $150,000 to remodel the Indian Creek Fire Station. $20,000 for a mobile repeater. $45,000 for an additional EMS squad. Totally $215,000. Here's our priorities. $150,000 to remodel Station 23 located in Indian Creek Township. The station was funded by state grant. Councillor Munson sought to have living quarters included at the time, but due to a lack of staffed firefighters, the building was designed as a volunteer fire department and contains no form of living quarters. Currently, firefighters are occupying the community meeting room and temporarily utilizing office space as bedrooms, which is problematic for public use and privacy. Temporary lockers are being utilized along with storage cabinets. Fitness equipment is occupying a bay in the garage where cabinets generously donated by Van Buren Township are awaiting the remodel project. There's a single restroom that also contains a shower where firefighters must cleanse after a fire. This needs to be separated for public use and to ensure carcinogen exposure is minimized. The second restroom was converted into a laundry area that is capable of handling duty uniforms, but unable to properly clean fire gear. A temporary radio room is located off of the garage, but a permanent room with a proper installation is needed to protect the expensive communication equipment. A new office is necessary to conduct business, complete fire reports, and allow the township trustee to conduct their necessary duties. The kitchen was not designed for firefighters to live in the building. It is barely separated from the garage and is completely separate from the temporary living. Relocation is necessary to ensure food preparation is not contaminated by exhaust or fumes. Public safety was greatly increased by the staffing of Station 23. It is critical temporary modifications be alleviated by permanent alterations, making the station fully inhabitable for firefighters 24/7/365 and to restore public use. $45,000 for the replacement of Squad 22 located in Perry Township. Originally slated for replacement in 2018, funds were needed to replace SCBA's. The current squad is beginning to see mechanical costs incurred with the zero to full speed climate of the Emergency Response Service. Firefighting equipment is stored in the cab with firefighters, creating unnecessary exposure. The new squad would reduce maintenance costs and allow firefighters to be separated from equipment. Additional equipment, including extrication and fire suppression supplies, could be carried. The vehicle would also be capable of pulling trailers containing special operation equipment serving the district, such as the boat, hazmat trailer, and UTV. Previously, the Public Safety Income Tax provided countywide communications upgrades that included 800 megahertz radios and mobile data terminals. That project, while necessary, came with some collateral damage as many rural parts of Monroe County experienced poor radio service. Those sounds are not music to a first responder's ears, and a $20,000 mobile repeater will enhance our communication capabilities even more. On behalf of the Monroe Fire Protection District, I appreciate the opportunity to apply for the Public Safety Income Tax Funding and hope you will consider our requests. For more information about the Monroe Fire Protection District, please visit monroefd.org.
All right, well, thank you, Chief Dillard, for the video presentation there. That's, it's always great to see a visualization of a lot of these things that are, that are going on. So thank you very much. Are there any questions from councilmembers for Chief Dillard? Mr. McKim?
Yes, thank you, Chief Dillard. I was just wondering if you could talk at all about the degree to which your department provides mutual aid to other fire departments, in particular the city.
Yeah, so there's a countywide mutual aid agreement between every fire department in Monroe County. Now, traditionally, most aid was automatic. That was when dispatched calls went out and we were sent basically anywhere we're needed. Now, with the mutual aid plan in place, it happens on a much less frequent occasion. Now, it's, most of the time, it occurs when stations are out of service and additional units are needed. So if the city were completely out of fire units and a 911 call came in, the nearest township fire department would be dispatched.
Okay, thank you. During, back when we did have automatic aid agreements, or at least implied automatic aid between the different departments, can you, was it particularly, I guess, balanced in terms of the amount of aid that each provide to each other? Or was the city always needing to provide aid to the, to the townships and not vice versa? Do you have a sense of how that, that balance worked out?
Yeah, so it was far more common for the fire district to provide fire assistance to the city. I would have to revisit those numbers, but there were some years where it was probably 10 to 1. We may respond to the south side 100 times, and we may receive about 10 responses outside. As far as Van Buren Township, they certainly have always assisted the district more than the district has assisted Van Buren. Typically, they came on all of our calls, and we went on a few of theirs. I know that Van Buren and Ellisville operate together very frequently. And on the north end of town, we're now beginning to work with Northern Monroe and Benton Township more. But historically, if you're looking at City Fire District, we assisted on the south side far more times than we received aid.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the chief? Yes, Ms. Munson?
Yes. It was really something to see the video of the Indian Creek Fire Station with firefighters now living there. That building was absolutely not designed for anybody to live in it. And a correction to the construction sequence, the initial part of that building was funded by donations from the residents of Indian Creek Township. And many, many fundraising events. People went around with boots and helmets and asked their neighbors to contribute money to help build that fire station. The more recent construction there with the taller bays, that was funded by a state grant thanks to casino funding. And right now, the, the building is not well-suited to be used for public meetings as it has been for, for 50 years. That's really, that's really too bad because Indian Creek Fire Station has also been the polling site for the precinct of Indian Creek. And I hope that, I hope that remodeling will be able to resolve the, the community meeting place. Thank you.
And, you know, Councillor Munson, up until COVID hit, when the community needed to use that meeting room, we were moving the furniture out of the way, and we were making room for the meetings. But after COVID came into play, it just, it's not been a good idea. And unfortunately, we're not able to isolate from anyone that comes in. And if our fire crews get sick, we need people to be able to respond.
Right. So now we've been having our meetings outside in the park. Right. So now we've been having our meetings outside in the park. But that won't work throughout the whole year, of course. Nor nor will it work for for the election. Mr. Deckard, Mr. Deckard arrived.
Deckard, Mr. Deckard has joined us. Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you for having me, and I'm sorry that I wasn't able to be with you earlier, and I appreciate the chance to be with you now.
Great. Okay, are there any further questions for Chief Dillard? Any questions or comments? Yes, please, Ms. Hawk?
Just a quick comment. I really appreciate the visual that I've seen so far both in Benton and Monroe Fire District. I think it's just, it's easier to grasp for the public so they can really see what's going on. So I thank you for taking time to do that.
Yeah. All right, and so we'll see if there's nothing, nothing else for Mr. Dillard. We'll see if there's any other fire department representatives that have remarks that they'd like to make. And.
Hello, Mr. President. This is Mike Kornman, Ellisville Fire Department. I did submit, I did submit a video. It's real short and sweet. If they'd like to watch it and then I can entertain any questions.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
All right, one moment, please.
Well, the PowerPoint presentations and video presentations are just terrific.
Hello, I'm Mike Kornman. I'm the fire chief for the Ellisville Fire Department. We have a contract with the Richland Township trustee to provide fire protection to the unincorporated areas of Monroe County within Richland Township. We've done so since nineteen forty-seven. The request from our department on behalf of the Richland Township trustee is for twenty thousand dollars to continue our quest to supply our apparatus with mobile radio repeaters. There's a need for the mobile radio repeaters in Monroe County, in particular in Ellisville or Richland Township areas. We provide fire protection to the West Side Economic Development Area, also known as the West Side TIF. These buildings are constructed in a way that prohibits the use of the eight hundred megahertz radio system as requested to use by the Central Emergency Dispatch Center of Monroe County. We cannot communicate when we get inside these buildings. A mobile radio repeater allows our portable handheld radios to communicate with the truck, which then rebroadcast it out onto the eight hundred megahertz radio system. This is the reason why we want to continue to improve our communications in Richland Township, particularly in Richland Township. It's used elsewhere, but it really works well in Richland Township. So we have the adequate radio coverage and firefighter safety. That's the reason for our request. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right. Well, as council members, if we have any questions or comments for Mr. Korman? Go ahead, Ms. Hawk.
Yes, when when I saw the request, when we were looking at it before, I I did not understand what Chief Kornman was saying, how very essential this is, that they weren't, aren't able to use anything that sounds like other than these repeaters for areas that they must serve. So just, why aren't we doing this? Must do it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Korman, for joining us tonight. That was very helpful. And I do not believe we have any other.
What about Lois?
I'm sorry.
Lois might want to make a presentation.
Okay, okay, yes. Ms. Purcell, did you have some remarks or a presentation you'd like to provide tonight?
I don't really have any details or anything, but I do know that the station is small and when they start the trucks up, that odor is there for a long time, even after the trucks leave. And for the safety of the firemen, they could sure use that eighty thousand to have a system that cleans the air. And I thought maybe one of the firemen would be on this meeting, but I don't see that they've asked to be so. I don't have anything else.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Munson?
Yes, before we leave this, I thought it would be useful for us to review for the public the recommendations of the county council to the public safety committee. And there were requests from the fire departments that were larger than were recommended by the county council in large part because we didn't think that level of funding was supportable. And we had asked the fire departments in their applications to prioritize their needs. And so when we reviewed the applications and made our recommendations, we tried to follow these priorities. So I would just like to say what what our recommendations were to the public safety lit committee. For Monroe Fire Protection District, the council recommended a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for fire station remodel and for one repeater. For Richland Township through Ellisville Fire Department, we recommended one repeater for twenty thousand dollars. For Bean Blossom Township and the Stoudenville Volunteer Fire Department, we recommended eighty-three thousand seven hundred dollars for exhaust system upgrades and two repeaters. And then for Benton Township, we recommended eighty thousand dollars for improvements for their exhaust system. So I think you can see that the council's recommendations fit very well with the needs as presented by these fire chiefs.
Very good. So I think at this time, we'll go ahead and introduce the resolution, if that's okay with everybody, unless there's additional comments or questions that we have, I'll go ahead and read this resolution that has been introduced again by Councilmember McKim, Munson, and myself. This is Resolution two thousand and twenty, and this is a two pager, so bear with me here. I'll get through this as quickly as I can. Resolution two thousand and twenty dash forty. Resolution of the members of Monroe County Council as members of the local income tax council to vote upon a distribution of public safety local income tax funding for fire departments and requesting a vote of all members of local income tax council. Whereas Indiana Code Section six dash three dot six dash six dash eight allows for discretionary distribution of public safety local income tax to fire departments, volunteer fire departments, and emergency, emergency medical service providers who, one, provide fire protection or emergency medical services within Monroe County, and two, are operated by or serve a political subdivision that is not otherwise entitled to receive a distribution of public safety local income tax. And whereas the Monroe County Local Income Tax Council has historically entertained applications by eligible entities and considered or provided funding of public safety lit dollars to those entities. And whereas because of a change in state law, members of the local income tax council now vote individually rather than in voting blocks according to the unit of government to which they belong. And whereas for budget year two thousand and twenty-one, a subcommittee of the local income tax council determined that a recommendation of the amount to be distributed to eligible entities should first be made by the Monroe County Council after reviewing applications. And whereas to carry out that work, a subcommittee of Monroe County Council reviewed applications, heard presentations by eligible entities, and scored those applications based on merit and need. And whereas on July twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty, the entire Monroe County Council reviewed the Monroe County Council Subcommittee's recommendations in past Resolution two thousand and twenty dash thirty-seven, copy of which is attached here to incorporated herein, recommending that distributions be made for the year two thousand and twenty-one to four agencies in a total amount of three hundred and fifty-three thousand seven hundred dollars. And whereas on August fourth, the Public Safety Local Income Tax Subcommittee met and failed to receive a majority of votes to support the recommendations of the Monroe County Council Subcommittee and the entire Monroe County Council, resulting in the Public Safety Local Income Tax Subcommittee's recommendation to not provide any funding in two thousand and twenty-one for the above mentioned fire departments. And whereas that Public Safety Local Income Tax Subcommittee's vote was a mere recommendation to the local income tax council. And as such, the county council wishes to reject the recommendation and to approve this resolution in order to affirmatively cast its votes as members of the local income tax council in favor of providing funding for the fire departments as followed by Indiana Code six dash three dot six dash six dash eight. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Monroe County Council that members of the local income tax council or members of the Monroe County Council reject Public Safety Local Income Tax Subcommittee's recommendation made on August fourth to deny funding for the fire departments who are not otherwise entitled to receive distribution of public safety local income tax dollars. Each member of the Monroe County Council is a member of the local income tax council hereby cast their vote on a proposal to support local fire departments in the following amounts. For the Monroe Fire Protection District, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars for Ellisville Fire Department, Richland Township, twenty thousand dollars. For Bean Blossom Township, Steinsville Volunteer Fire Department, eighty-three thousand seven hundred dollars. For Benton Township of Monroe County Volunteer Fire Department, eighty thousand dollars for a total amount of three hundred and fifty-three thousand seven hundred dollars. Next, by providing the amounts above to fire departments and after the amount of public safety local income tax dollars provided to the Monroe County Central Emergency Dispatch Center, which is two million two hundred and forty-seven thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. The following units of government would receive certified shares near or greater than the following percentages and estimated amount, City of Bloomington, fifty-one point two five percent, or two million six hundred and fifty-nine thousand seventeen dollars. Monroe County, fifty-five point eight eight percent, or two million three hundred and eighty thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars. Town of Ellisville, two point eight five percent, or one hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. And Town of Steinsville, point zero two percent, or eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. The Monroe County Auditor shall immediately distribute this resolution to the other units with voting members of local income tax council, requesting that they take a vote as soon as legally possible to either support or reject this resolution, which proposes funding as stated above. A copy of this resolution shall also be sent to the Department of Local Government Finance, presented to the Monroe County Council on this twentieth day of August two thousand and twenty. Second, the thirty-first day of August two thousand and twenty. Second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the resolution. Who has questions? Who has comments? That they would like to make at this time? And we do just, we do plan to take public comment on this before we vote as well. Ms. Munson?
I don't want to comment specifically on the resolution, but I noticed noted that that Chief Orthon has joined the meeting and he may wish to make comments.
Okay. We'll check in with Chief Orthon. Thanks for joining us, Chief Orthon. Did you have any remarks that you'd like to make tonight?
Yes, thanks for the opportunity. Is audio working?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Fire Chief Raymond Orthon, Bean Blossom Township, Steinsville Volunteer Fire Department. In our application, we had requested forty-three thousand six ninety-five and some change for the ventilation system. I was on here earlier when Lois was on, the Zoom wouldn't let me. Only raise my hand was the best option I had, so I was trying to get in, just couldn't speak at the time. The ventilation system is one of our top priorities right now. A lot of studies are out there showing cancer within the fire service. And one of the ways to eliminate that is eliminating the diesel exhaust fumes in the bays. Our living quarters, if you will, our meeting space is all housed on the second floor right above the bays. So all of those fumes and exhaust smoke just travels up into that area. So when we go up there on a monthly basis for both trainings as well as business meetings, guys will pull the trucks out, check them, things while we're up there. And all of those fumes are are right there waiting on us to have the meeting. So if we could get that, that's what our request was there. We had also requested mobile repeaters for our apparatus. As great as the limestone has been for our community in the past years around Steinsville, it's not very good for eight hundred megahertz, apparently. We find ourselves in a major dead zone and pretty much the entire town of Steinsville and then a lot of surrounding areas. So by having those mobile repeaters, the eight hundred system is is fine as long as everything's in working order. In our trucks, for the most part, we can get out. However, once we exit our trucks and we're using portable radios, communication is is poor to none in a lot of areas. So we're trying to get that addressed. We was under the impression that with the eight hundred megahertz project, repeaters would be part of those originally. And then since then, it's kind of changed as it went through the process. But needless to say, we're still in need of those, and that's why for the last couple of years I've requested some. And the last thing in our application was for some part-time personnel. I understand that council doesn't like paying for personnel because it's not guaranteed every year. However, our tax base for the town of Steinsville and Bean Blossom Township does not provide us enough to have personnel. And with volunteer service going down nationwide every year, we're looking to try to adapt and to change the best we can. So that's why we request for the personnel. If there's any questions on any of this, please feel free.
Thank you, Chief Orthon. Any questions for the chief? Okay. So now we'll we'll return to council. Are there any questions at this time or comments on the resolution that was just read? I don't see any. We can, okay, Councilmember Munson?
Yes, I would like to talk generally about public safety local income tax and show the graphic that I presented to the council in draft form, and I've updated thanks to input from from colleagues. So I appreciate the the input. And I sent this to TSD and they're they're ready now to share this on the screen because I guess I can't do that that out here in Indian Creek. We have DSL and it works very slowly. So this started out as as a pie chart and quickly became something other than a pie chart. I wanted to show how public safety services are divided among the Monroe County Government, City of Bloomington, and Ellisville Town Government. And I've left off Steinsville, I apologize. But because you get such a small proportion of public safety local income tax revenue and you have a small proportion of of the property tax, I could not get you in. Steinsville, if you were here, you would be smaller than the dot above the I in community. So you just have to imagine Steinsville is really not excluded intentionally. The services that can be funded by public safety lit revenue are police and fire for the City of Bloomington. For the town of Ellisville, police and fire. For Monroe County Government, we have law enforcement through our sheriff, but we do not fund fire. Instead, Monroe- Instead, Monroe County Government funds a number of different public safety services that apply to the entirety of the county. The residents of Bloomington and the residents of Ellisville and Steinsville, as well as the residents of the unincorporated areas. These services are through the courts, community corrections, the prosecutor, the jail, our health department, and our emergency management department. For fire protection, we turn to township fire departments and fire protection districts. And that is shown in gold here. And the percentages of public safety lit revenue that are being recommended by the Public Safety Lit Committee are shown here in red. You can see that City of Bloomington will get fifty-one point three percent of the available revenue after funding dispatch. Ellisville, two point eight percent. Monroe County Government, forty-five point nine percent, even though we're serving all of the residents for most of the services. And rural fire and EMS, zero percent this year. And I think when you look at this in terms of public safety services and not just property tax, you really get a picture that shows we have very unequal allocation. Monroe County Government actually should be getting a very large share, given our public safety responsibility. And certainly, the rural fire departments with EMS should be getting some percentage. This is because every single person pays income tax into public safety fund that live in the county, not just people who live in Ellisville and Bloomington, but also the people who live in the unincorporated areas of the county. So I think, I think my position all along has been one of equity, fairness. Certainly, there are many people who are residents of Monroe County that are not going to be getting their fair share of the revenue that they paid into. Essentially, that's my comment, and I will be supporting the resolution because I think it's important to make a statement that we support equity in the services that are provided and in the funding to be given to those services. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McKim, did you have a comment? Or was it Ms. Hawk? I can't, whoever.
No, I'll have a, I'll probably have a comment after public comment.
Okay. Did, Ms. Hawk, go ahead. Need to unmute your microphone.
Sorry. Now, I keep trying to turn it off because my dog won't shut. And I don't know whether it's more appropriate to say this now or later, but I want to make it clear that people not just live in the city, they, they also work in the county, many of them. They shop in the county. They recreate in the county. It's, their family members live out there. Fire protection is important. You cannot wait until you've figured it out. When you call for fire protection, you want someone to show up. And since we can't, when we pay our public safety tax, it does not come back to the area that serves you. That's just not the way it works. And I think Jeff McKim's going to discuss this just a bit about how I won't want to step on your, your presentation, Jeff, but it's just important that we understand that when we got behind supporting, having this public safety tax spoke out for it, we thought we were going to be able to help out these rural fire departments. And it's essential that we do that. And shame on us if we don't.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Hawk. Think now, if there's no further comments at this point, we'll just turn to public comment. And I see a few hands are raised for anyone who would like to provide a public comment on the resolution before there is a vote taken tonight. Please raise your hand. Use the chat feature to indicate that you want to speak. And we will, we'll go ahead and get started. We'll have two minutes per speaker so that we can provide time for everyone who wants to speak. We'll get started with, it looks like Galaxy S ten. If you could state your name for the record, please. We'll start with, with you.
Would you like me to demonstrate the sound that happens when there are thirty seconds left?
Yep. So that'll be the sound that indicates you have, is it thirty seconds remaining?
That is correct.
After, when you have thirty seconds remaining on your time, you'll hear that sound. Once the thirty seconds has expired, the microphone will be shut off and we'll move to the next speaker.
Chris Chap with Bean Blossom Township. I support the movement that you guys are going to make for the county fire departments.
Great. Thank you for your comments. It looks like next we have Mr. Randy Paul.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thanks. I just wanted to talk a minute about, not the budget, because you've got experts in front of you there, but the people who are working in these departments. You know, firefighters are considered our heroes, our first responders. And I'm somewhat embarrassed that this is even up for debate. I find it surprising that we would send men and women out in potentially dangerous situations without proper equipment. I'm embarrassed by the fact that they have to come back and sleep in the conditions that we were shown in the presentation. You know, these are our heroes, and we should be treating them that way. And I hope they don't view these, this debate as anything other than trying to do what's right and not something that suggested them that we are not appreciative of their work. This is a first for me. This is one debate that I really can't figure out why we're having this debate. And I agree with Marty when she said, why aren't we doing this? I'm sorry, Marty Hawk, that we're not doing this. This seems to be just a no-brainer and something just out of decency we should be doing. Frankly, I don't understand the debate, and I hope you guys do what you're trying to do tonight. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Moore, welcome.
Hello. First, thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for all those fire departments that have put such time and effort into the presentations. I just want to mention to you how wonderful our fire departments work so well together. One of the, I know they all spoke individually about their own needs, but I just want to express the pride that I have and the collaboration that they have amongst departments and the conjunction that they have with our emergency management department. It's just top-notch here, as you would, I'm sure, assume, but I just want that noted. I feel like we're really moving in a positive direction with the relationships and the partnerships that we have. And I just wanted to make note of that. And I also wanted to mention our volunteer departments, Benton and Bean Blossom. You know, when COVID hit, we required a lot from our departments, and they continued to have to jump in those rigs and, and go to, you know, to scenes. And we, we really, really deemed a lot of reports and response from them. And, you know, and everyone was so, so wonderful to work with us, get us the different things that we needed to be able to then provide things back to them, but it took such a group effort. And I think it's, it's easy to see a career department to get those numbers back to you so quickly and so efficiently, but, you know, even our volunteers were able to do that for us. And so I commend them.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Straw, Christopher Straw is up next.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. I just wanted to give my support to the rural fire departments and emergency crews out there. They do a lot for us out in these rural areas, and it would be an absolute shame to not fund them properly, to keep them safe and keep our communities safe. And I loved hearing that it's not just about central Bloomington. It is way more of our community out there. These fire departments are out there in our schools, me and our community, doing so much. We need to continue to fund them, to keep them safe and keep our communities safe in all areas.
Thank you. And Brittany Davis is next.
Hi. Thank you, guys, for your time tonight and looking over this, and I appreciate all the fire chiefs that put together the presentations. They were wonderful. I just am very thankful for the rural fire departments as well, and I ask that you fully support them and approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like that has concluded our public comment period. I don't see any additional members of the public who want to speak at this time. So we'll now go back to council and hear questions or comments from council members before we take a vote. Who would like to go first, Mr. McKim?
Yes, thank you very much. Counselor Hawk already brought up a key point, that city residents don't just pay taxes to the city, and residents outside the city don't just pay taxes to the county. All the income taxes in the county are pooled and then distributed to the counties and cities and towns on the basis of their property tax levies. And it's just because of the meandering path of legislative history that the county's fire department does not count towards the county's property tax footprint, which determines that PS lit. And remember, the county does, in a way, have a fire department. It's responsible for it. Monroe Fire Protection District has a board that's entirely appointed by the county commissioners. Their budget and tax rates are set by the Monroe County Council, just like we set the budget and tax rates that support the Monroe County Sheriff's Department. However, that fire tax levy does not count towards the county's allocation of public safety lit, while the city's fire department does count towards theirs. And like I said, that's really just because of the path of, that the legislation took over the many years that, that income taxes have existed in Monroe County. And I think this voluntary process for qualified service providers provides some remedy for this legislative omission. Second, we're all interconnected. Township and county fire departments provide mutual aid, and hopefully will someday again provide automatic aid with the city. We all depend on each other during emergencies. This process of allocating funding for township fire departments has provided in the past an effective opportunity for collaboration between the city and the county. We learn more about city fire, and the city council members learn more about rural fire protection. The collaboration reinforced the connectedness of all of us and our mutual interdependence. And I'm profoundly disappointed that this collaboration among the elected officials does not appear to be continuing this year. But I still hold high hopes that this is just a temporary blip because of concerns about COVID-related revenue decreases and that effective cooperation with the city will be able to continue in the future. And that said, I'll repeat briefly concerns that I've shared in the past about the structure of this legislation, that it makes absolutely no sense to give the Bloomington City Council control over directing funding to residents who are, by definition, not their constituents. It's not the fault of city councilors that the law is set up that way. But I would like to see all of us, city and county alike, work to advocate for a fairer way of allocating local income taxes to rural fire departments and other city and county functions. So I'll be proudly supporting this resolution tonight and stand in support of our rural fire departments.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Deckard?
Thank you very much, and I want to apologize again for joining late. As council members know, and some members of the public, I'm a night teacher on Monday and Wednesdays, and I'm squeezing the meeting in between a whole mess of students that'll be here shortly. I know it's absolutely crucial that I vote yes on this in support these fire departments and these applications, and I'm anxious to do that. I have visited these departments. I know the work that they do. I know the importance that they play in the life of all county residents. And like Jeff McKim, I look forward to a day when we begin to think of the county in its entirety and not just the community of interest that we have, because, good heavens, with mutual aid agreements and just the general great work that is done, these folks are doing tremendous things for our community. So I'm anxious to vote yes on this tonight before a whole mess of students come and join me in this classroom here on our campus, and look forward to that vote. I'll be quiet now.
Thank you, Mr. Deckard, Mr. Iverson, and then Ms. Hawk?
Yes, I'm anxious to support this resolution for many of the reasons that Counselor McKim talked about, including the fire tax levy that simply does not benefit the residents in the first district, including those in Salt Creek Township and Polk Township. I'm very concerned that the fire departments that exist in northern Monroe and Benton Townships will not be getting this aid, but I'm very proud to be here tonight to support them. There's one additional reason that I'm proud to support this resolution, and that is that I want to be on record to say that I support these heroes in their fight to reduce the risk of cancer among their ranks. And there's some really great literature out there that I'll share later, but there's an increase, significantly increased incidence for colon, rectal, prostate, testicular, bladder, and thyroid cancers, as well as mesothelioma and malignant meloma amongst firefighters. This is based on really great literature, meta-analysis, and it's really amazing that we have an opportunity to support these, these folks tonight, and I really hope that others are able to see the videos that we saw this evening to, to understand the risks that these folks are putting themselves to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other, Ms. Hawk?
Yes, I, I, whoops, am I still? I just wanted to reiterate that it's clear when people say, well, just take the money out of the county's portion and, and, you know, give it over to the fire departments, rather than doing it the way the legislation says, where just take it off at the top after you've covered a central dispatch. And, and to come back to what the councilmember McKim said, it's because we don't get any credit for our total dollar amount to be able to pull money that the city is pulling for their fire department, because we don't have that tax included in our allowable levy. And so it's just inappropriate to say, just take it out of your funds. It's, maybe it's just a total misunderstanding, and maybe the people saying that have no idea this is all distributed. But as a reminder, the people in the city, many people don't even know where the lines are between what city and what's not. Many of us have a Bloomington address. We don't live in the city, but that's, that's the way Monroe County works. But we all enjoy the trails. We enjoy the lake. We like, we enjoy the shopping and, and, you know, going out to see the air balloons go up. And this is the reason why it's important to understand our fire department is there to respond wherever you are. They're showing up for emergencies as well. If you're out on the lake, as, as the gentleman from Benton Township said, now that, that vote that they have stored is to respond to people that might be recreating out at Lake Lemon. They can use it at Lake Monroe, but they're ready to respond for Lake Lemon. Many of the people that live in the city of Bloomington go out to Lake Lemon and enjoy the lake. So we just need to work together on this. I certainly support it.
Thank you. Ms. Wilt?
I'm going to be very, very brief because I'm cognizant that we need to get this vote done quickly. But I also didn't want to remain silent. I, I, I feel like the, the presentations that were made tonight were incredibly compelling. were incredibly compelling, and it would be difficult for someone to watch those and vote against funding that's needed to protect our county citizens. And echoing Counselor Hawk's point, this isn't, this shouldn't be a city-county thing. I get the funding streams make it as such, but we're all part of the same community, and we need to be supporting the public safety and public health of everyone who lives here. I'm out. I'm going to be quiet now because I want us to get this vote done. Thanks.
And I'll be really brief with my remarks too, but want to make sure that I say a few things here. And first, I want to thank all of you, my fellow council members, for being here tonight. Being present is really important, especially with these types of issues, and I'm a little saddened by the lack of participation from some other units of government that could have came here to voice their support as well too, but thank you all for being here. And I know a lot of you have gone to great lengths to rearrange your schedules and calendars to be able to do this and show the community how you feel and believe. You know, I think to have been here would have provided a great awareness and understanding, as Ms. Wiltz just mentioned. You know, and would demonstrate a real willingness to take this seriously, which I know you all have. You know, my vote on the increase to the public safety or the public safety income tax in 2016, I believe that was, a big part of that was what persuaded me to to vote in favor of that was knowing that our rural townships would be benefiting. And so this is, it's disappointing, to say the least, that our rural townships are going without. And I do hope it's just a temporary situation, but it makes me feel almost a little hoodwinked from my vote back in 2016. But I also do want to be on record as fully supporting our rural fire departments to the fullest extent possible. And a lot of people would probably say, well, why are you all even having this meeting? The city council has already made the decision. It doesn't make any sense, and it's pointless. Well, to me, there is a point to all of this, and it's to show my support. And this is our last final opportunity to do that, and I'm very happy to do so. So at this time, if there's no further comments or questions, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote on the resolution.
I do have a question for Margie. Margie, are you available?
I am available.
Can you check the chat with regards to how Megan should ask this? Is this as the county council or as members of the county lit?
Members of the local income tax council, but she will just do a roll call vote as she normally would.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Margie. So on the motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty dash forty, a resolution of the members of the Monroe County Council as members of the local income tax council to vote upon distribution of public safety, local income tax funding for fire departments, and requesting a vote of all members of the local income tax. Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Louis Purcell, Lois Purcell?
Yes.
Kate Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion failed eight to zero.
Motion.
Wait, what?
I was under the belief that we needed nine votes. Is that incorrect?
Well, I mean, this resolution of the county council passed unanimously.
Okay.
Yeah, it passed unanimously, but it will not be enough, it will not be enough votes to actually get it passed by the local income tax council.
Gotcha. Okay, motion passed unanimously then.
So the motion passes, the resolution passes through the county council unanimously. Thank you, everybody, to all of our staff, Ms. Miller, Michelle, Ms. Rice, T S D, thanks for doing this all on short notice, and thanks again to all of my council colleagues for being here tonight to have this important vote and discussion. At this time, we are adjourned.